Well, as Hafaday, the Committee of the Whole is back from recess. We are on Bill Number 298-36 as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing, an act to amend Section 4A of Public Law 3470 as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 3544 relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose de Leongaro Commercial Port and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue bond proceeds. We are in the first round of questions for the panel. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just a continuation that we are, the dialogue that we were having on Friday. And before my time is out, I just want to reiterate or perhaps explain once more that Bill 298, which is the bill that we are discussing, is to just reprogram or to remove the caps on capital improvement, improvement projects in previous public, public laws. And so basically, we're not changing the, the projects that are going to be done. We're not restructuring any of the plans. What we're doing is we're removing the caps. And the challenge that the port has been having is that the cost of build, the cost of the projects have gone up. And so the projects will still remain the same, but it gives the port the flexibility to get these projects done by removing the caps. And no other autonomous agency has specific caps on their capital improvement projects by law. The port, as a result of historical laws in the 34th and 35th legislature, were given those caps in anticipation that the economy was such that we would meet the requirements, that they would have enough revenue, they would have enough money to meet those caps to get those projects done. However, as a result of either the COVID-19 pandemic, the military buildup, which put a strain on our outside construction, and also the war in Ukraine and the, and the rise of inflation and the cause of inflation, this is what we need to do now so that we can move the port forward so that they can accomplish their capital improvement projects, improving our waterfront facilities, our fuel line systems, so that they can be more efficient and that they could provide the goods in a more timely manner to the people of Guam, the goods that are imported in a more timely manner to the people of Guam. So with that, Madam Chair, that's all I have. Thank you very much at this time.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Speaker Turlohi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to confirm if, so I know that the governor granted the port some ARP funds with a condition that fees for port user fees not be raised and for two years. And I'm wondering if we allow, if we remove the caps on these projects and pretty much give the authority to the port to finance any project in order that they desire, it's pretty clear to me that some of these projects will not be funded because that's the issue, right? There's not enough funds. Are we going to see the need to be coming back with some other way to fund these projects that is going to include raising revenues or, sorry, raising port fees in order to fund these other projects?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the question. I don't think any of us have a crystal ball, and I cannot definitively say yes or no, but I could tell you at the port, it's not always our first go-to to raise tariffs. We are improving efficiencies by improving morale. Birth times have increased significantly. The port is revenue generating, and the idea behind focusing on revenue generating projects funded by the revenue bond is so that we would have the revenues necessary to avert any need for tariff.
What will be the priority projects then?
So originally, the way the first law was structured, as you know, it was a $17.5 million for the administration building demolition and the building of the new administration building. We came before the legislature and asked to bring the $17.5 million down to $10 million. And the $7 million there, we said that let the board have the ability to choose to fund F1 upgrade, that's the fill line, the terminal operating system, the financial management system, and the fill connectivity line. If you add these four projects, it's far less than $7 million. But what we did, as we've explained, is we were able to get a $3.2 million grant from the Economic Development Authority. And so we're not going to have to fund a fill connectivity line from the $7 million. F1, we recently received 22.9.
Wait, wait. So the administration building is still a priority, but less than $10 million?
Yeah, so now there's $10 million available in the admin building. And the idea there in 2010 was to, instead of demolishing the building, to build an annex next to the administration building, have a bridge so that the administration building will be ADA accessible. And so that $10 million was allocated for that. And we're discussing with our consultants, it looks like we need about $2 million to address the concrete spalling at the administration building. So you might see an $8 million balance there to construct the annex building, all part of the $10 million. And so if this bill passes, I'm, I'm concerned that the board will say forego building an annex building and instead take the $8 million applied to the shortfalls that we're seeing in these other projects.
Okay. And so which projects will be funded?
The, the HWRF building.
Are they only on this list? Because the bill says including but not limited to this list. So are the projects you're intending to fund with the bond proceeds on this list?
Only the projects on this list is what we would fund with the revenue bond.
All right. In what order then?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
Just what, yeah, so which are the priorities?
The priorities are those revenue generating.
Which ones? Because you won't be able to fund all of them, obviously, and you're only going to fund $2 million now of the 10 for the annex building. So, yeah.
I think the only one that we can forego is the annex building. Everything else, the waterline project is underway. We're just waiting for the shipboat to sign off on the permit. We forego the, we delayed the procurement for Warehouse One because that came in at $3 million dollars shorter than what was funded. Gulf Pier, we are seeing that the amount for Gulf Pier, that's the other fill line, is much higher than the $2 million allocated for that project in 2014.
What, what was the nature of the funds that you said you received from GIDEA?
The revenue bond?
No. You said you received a grant?
Oh, sorry, Economic Development Authority, EDA.
Oh, EDA, okay.
Yeah, EDA, yeah, yeah.
And how, how did the governor mandate that you will not raise user fees in giving you the ARP funds? Is that like in writing or is there some kind of agreement that the port signed or how was that effectuated?
It was very public. I don't believe the board has passed the resolution to that effect, but it was extremely public about it and.
The reason I'm asking is because I remember reviewing the user fees before the first bond approval, right? And trying to get my head around, it was the PUC who had pretty much mandated that those fees would be raised regardless of any other arguments. And we, I remember at the time that we were discussing the first bond, if there was any opportunity to reduce those user fees since they were going out for bond instead, but it seemed like the PUC had incorporated the bond proceeds already or, you know, anticipated them when they, when they set those fees. And, yeah, so, yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure there's nothing that we're not seeing right in front of us that's actually going to take effect at the PUC because of our change in priorities here or flexing, you know, giving the port the flexibility that, that, that in turn allows the PUC to again go after an increase in, in user fees.
Well, Madam Speaker, as you know, the port's undergoing a master plan update, and we're repositioning the brand, the Port Authority of Guam as a brand, so that we can go after the 600 acres of commercial property available and to see what kind of development we can bring so that the revenues of the port is not 100% reliant on throughput.
On what?
On throughput, on the cargo throughput, the break bulk and containerizations of those. What we're also doing is we're repositioning the port so that the Department of Defense can be a huge customer to the port, and we're making some inroads with DOD, with Indo-PACOM, and also with Joint Region Marianas.
Yeah, so what ended up to be the agreement with the Department of Defense in regards to the Tiger Grant?
The Tiger Grant was issued in 2014, I believe. No, MARAD, it's the MARAD.
Yeah, Maritime.
So it was issued, so we got the notice to proceed, I believe, like 2019. This is a $10 million grant that was to take care of the, the WRF, the concrete slab and the road. And in working with MARAD over the last three and a half years, we've been communicating that there's, the biggest constraint is requiring us to comply with Bi-American. It is a Department of Transportation MARAD grant, and we're, in doing the numbers, it looks like we're going to have to spend $12 million just to get a $10 million grant. So what we did, the last board meeting, we asked the board if they would support a resolution concurring with the Port Authority of Guam's management's decision to proceed as if though we got the waiver, and we're documenting everything. Part of the, the reasons to get an agency waiver from Bi-American is if the cost of the project is more than 6%, we're at 37%. Another indicator is that if there's time increases because we have to comply with Bi-American, there is, because for the steel alone, if we were to comply with Bi-American, it'll take about 18 months, but getting the steel from the same source that Department of Defense got their steel, we would have that in six months. And so we're also asking MARAD to de-scope and apply that $10 million just to the WRF rehabilitation work because we, they were, we were told that if MARAD is made aware and confirms that Federal Highway, for example, put in the $3 million for the road, which we're able to secure, then they may deduct that from the $10 million. So if you look at all the reasons for getting the $10 million, it's really working against us.
All right. And then would you still need this $12 million? Is this the source of the $12 million, your $12 million then?
The $13 million, so it was a $59 million bid. One bid came in with Sumitomo Construction, and through the team, we negotiated that $59 million down to $46 million, and we broke it up in two phases. First phase is just all the rehabilitation WRF work, that's $36 million. The second phase is $8 million, and we are, through our contract, we're asking Sumitomo Construction to give us one year to decide if we're going to do Phase Two. If we don't do Phase Two, we don't do Phase Two. The consequence is the WRF is not operational, and we're proposing to fund the $8 million, taking $4 million from port funds for this fiscal year and $4 million from port funds next fiscal year. But if this bill passes and signed into law, then that $8 million from the annex, for example, can be diverted over to HWRF. The port doesn't have to spend its revenue, and then we use those monies to cover over some of our other shortfalls.
All right, so I just.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know, but I just heard another thing. So you're saying we're going to spend $36 million on this HWRF, only $10 million of it's going to come from the MARAD grant? And what are our obligations then to MARAD by receiving the $10 million out of $36 million that is actually needed for this?
Yeah, it's actually $46 million.
Forty-six.
$59 million for a $23 million budget. So we negotiated the $59 down to $46, $36 and $8. The obligation in order to get the $10 million from MARAD is upon substantial completion, so it's a reimbursement basis. So we don't get the.
But you're going to reimburse that? It's not a grant?
It's, no, MARAD's going to reimburse, we didn't get the, we don't have the money in our bank and at the port. It's with MARAD, and it's on a substantial reimbursement basis. So we have substantial completion by.
But only $10 million?
Correct.
But what I'm asking, what is your obligation now to MARAD or DOD because we received $10 million from them out of the $46 needed to repair this WRF?
We, we didn't receive the $10 million.
Well, we are going to receive reimbursements of $10 million.
If we comply with Bi-American or they give the waiver, and if we complete it on time, then we'll get the reimbursement.
Right, but what's our obligation for this?
No obligation. This was done because MARAD believes that the Port Authority of Guam is the linchpin to support the whole military readiness. There's no obligation, for example, to have HWRF be a DOD priority. There's no.
Right? It's not a divert facility or anything like that?
Correct, other than the fact that MARAD recognizes that the port's role in the development of commerce on the island and throughout the region.
So you would still be able to use HWRF for purposes that you had described to us before, like the cruise industry?
Yeah, and an alternate WRF. So whenever there's congestion in the main WRF, HWRF would be used for any activity that, to discharge a vessel without the use of a gantry crane.
So would you say this is, this is a priority over the other projects listed here? The repair of the, the fuel piers and the fuel lines and the, the other systems?
No, they're all, really, they're all priorities. When these priorities were identified, when Senator Brown was general manager, they're all absolutely priorities. They're all important. But when you look at what the funding is versus the needs for today, like I said, the annex building, we're not saying we're never going to build an annex building or redo a, have a new administration building. We're saying we have to forego that. Warehouse One, the condition of Warehouse One, instead of putting the allocated $2 million into Warehouse One building repair, we might just forego those repairs completely and then think about getting a grant that would demolish Warehouse One and then rebuild it to redesign it.
What about the fuel piers? This is what I'm worried about, that we, you, we give you the authority, you take care of the HWRF, we, we don't take care of item number two or the, the fuel piers and the connectivity fuel lines? And then PUC mandates that those have to be done, and then they're going to raise the fees because, because of that mandate.
So with the Gulf Pier, there was a $2 million for that. It's looking like that amount's going to be much higher than the $2 million. I tell you what we did, because all of these projects were capped in order to comply with the certification laws, for example, the board also passed a resolution saying that the general manager is authorized to tap other funds as are necessary in order to proceed with the procurement of these projects. I, we didn't want to just say, oh, I can, I can only certify up to $23 million, for example, for HWRF. It's kind of like, is it, do we, do we ask you guys to remove these numbers without any data or evidence that the numbers are really higher than what they're purported in the statute? Or do we just move forward, whatever we can do within the confines of the law and the statutes, and come back and say the only recourse we have is to remove all these caps so that the board can make those determinations? We're, we.
Right, we're removing the caps, but that doesn't give you any more money.
It does not.
And so you're telling us already that you're short because the, the proceeds don't fund all these projects, and that's why we're removing the caps, so you can fund at least some of them, right? Up to greater amounts such as HWRF.
Yeah.
But, but what if, yeah, and how, what if these other projects, as you said, are necessary and, and the proceeds are not enough to fund them? Are we going to see a rise in user fees because of that?
Yeah. I can't say, I mean, I know what your concern is, but I don't know what our options are at this point.
Well, I read somewhere that you're using $4 million in reserve funds to help fund something. Are there additional reserve funds as well?
There are. There are reserve funds.
How many? How much?
Probably about 20 million, but it's on the grand scheme of things. Here we have a $30 million shortfall for these projects, but we've identified a $300 million need at the port if we're really going to take care of everything. That's why we, we have a $1.2 million grant from the Office of Economic Adjustment, now it's OLDCC, to, to look at the port's water infrastructure needs, to look at the port's aging facilities. And the third phase of that is to look at how the port, what DOD can do to support the port's readiness so that the military can be ready. And that's some, some facilities at the port where we could have joint uses with the military, like Area A, for example, that fill tank, storage tank that was, we severed that from Mobile's management agreement so that there could be some opportunity there for DOD to use that as a fully functional fill, storage facility. So there, there are opportunities on the horizon, but we also think, Madam Speaker, that the faster HWRF is done and is operational, that's going to mean revenue for the port.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. That completes round one on Bill Number 298-36 as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations and Housing. We'll now begin round two. Senator Taidigui, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, I, I don't even remember around one going this direction, and then you gave the speaker to go to round one. So why aren't we given the same opportunity to have round one?
Senator Taidigui, we began round one before we closed for the weekend, and so round one began, and it, we took a break at Senator Nelson, and then we ended the round with Senator Turlohi. We're now beginning round two, so.
Madam Chair, if you're, if you're allowing her to have her round one today, then what gives us, why can't we have that same round one today as well? You're giving round one to her, so you can.
Senator Taidigui, as you know, we go in an order for.
No, and that's another thing, you know, I, I feel bad because you're always calling on me first, you know, to start off the conversation. I think we should mix it up to allow everybody else. But Madam Chair, if you're allowing the speaker to have round one today, then I don't see why you can't have everyone else in this body who's elected the same way to have that same opportunity to have round one.
Senator Taidigui, you can make a motion, notwithstanding the rules of the Committee of the Whole.
I make a motion that we still have round one to give everyone the same opportunity that the speaker had, and that is to have, be able to speak on this on round one.
Sure. There's been a motion to allow all those who were not present on Friday afternoon to, to ask questions in round one. Are there any objections?
This is a motion to overrule the chair.
Madam Chair, there was no quorum on Friday as well.
We were still in the Committee of the Whole. There is no objection. You may proceed. You're round one, Senator Taidigui, five minute.
I have, I'm sorry, I have an objection. Yeah.
There are two objections.
You or she already ruled on it?
I did not dabble down. Senator Taidigui, please, there's been an objection. Senator Rigel.
Yeah, I have an objection. I wasn't here Friday, so I forfeited my time because I wasn't here.
Yes, thank you.
That's why I'm objecting.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those in favor of the motion. Motion passes. Senator Taidigui, you may begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just don't think that we should be hiding anything here. We should all have the opportunity to ask questions. There's no reason why we should be. I mean, this, this bill could be very contentious, and we're making sure, as a responsibility of the people of Guam, that we go through this thoroughly. So I appreciate those who voted that we all have the opportunity to speak on this bill. Some of us had to leave early to pick up children.
Yep, that's me. I had to leave to pick up my children. Thank you.
My question goes to Mel. Good morning, Mel, and good morning to Tina as well from GIDEA. When we had the public hearing on this bill, there was a question I asked regarding bond covenants and to ensure that we were not jeopardizing not just the bond covenants, but the, those who purchased the bonds, and they're called the bond, the shareholders? Is that the correct terminology?
The bond investors, yes, ma'am.
Bond investitures. And you mentioned that you would let us know if there is anything that requires that the investors are notified of any changes or inclusions or anything whatsoever, and you would get back to us and let us know. I didn't see anything in, in the committee report. So can you kind of give us a background? And if you can, Mel, I'm, you're very good at explaining the history of something and to keep everybody up to date on what's going on and what led to this question that I'm asking.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that question, Senator. I do believe at the time, we had had a more of a, kind of a casual correspondence with bond counsel as to whether there were any concerns of the bondholders and the, the response of counsel sort of unofficially. The unofficial opinion was, no, you're fine. This is not a material event that needs to be disclosed to bondholders or will not have any kind of disclosure requirement. Following the public hearing and your request, we did put in a, a request to bond counsel for a formal opinion, which they provided on September 27th, which we transmitted to the committee chair on September 28th. And there is a letter, I believe it's in your committee report, provided by OREC, addressed to Ms. Tina Garcia, Christina Garcia, concerning, and the subject line is Bill 298-36, which then discusses that, and I quote, "Bill 298 does not purport to substantively alter the previously enumerated capital improvements, merely purports to remove approximate dollar amounts. The only laws which apply..." Basically, what it, the summary of the letter says that the only approval that they could see needing to happen was the approval of the legislature, which is why we're here today, and that bond holders, and I, to subsequently quote OREC, "By contrast, we have not viewed as section, as requiring an explicit list of projects being financing, or for that matter, specific amounts tied to the list of such projects." If you also look at the GIDEA debt abstract that talks about the annual disclosure obligation, so what are the things that we need to provide to our bondholders on an annual basis? We need to provide them, the port needs to provide annual audited financial statements, historical financial information and operating data, and reports that need to be contained in the annual reports, ocean carriers with service to Guam, operating revenues, major companies ranked by revenues, and historical operating results. And conversely, the debt abstract, also, the debt abstract, now, the debt abstract is like GIDEA's Bible for public debt, okay? Any of you, any and all of you are welcome to peruse, or we can provide you with a soft copy of it. It says, "Significant events that must be reported are principal and interest payment delinquencies, unscheduled draws on debt service reserves, unscheduled draws on credit enhancements, substitution of credit or liquidity providers, adverse tax opinions issued by the IRS, tender offers, ratings changes, bankruptcy, insolvency, receivership." So we're not dealing with any of that today. And so for that reason, in summary, to answer your question from the public hearing, these are the documents that support what we originally said was non-issue for bond.
Thank you, Mel. And this is pertaining to page six, I believe, from.
And this is pertaining to page six, I believe, from, remember, when I was talking in the public hearing regarding a certain page and that you would look, this is regarding that, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So Senator, when you were referencing page six, page six was from the, what we call the preliminary offering statement. The preliminary offering statement is like the marketing document that is provided to our bond investors. The thing that, the document, however, that encumbers the bond investors to the bond issuer is in fact the bond indenture. So what you were referencing was the bond preliminary offering statement. It's also called a prospectus if you're buying stocks. A preliminary offering statement is a preliminary document. And so the final language usually is, the final language, the final contract is the indenture. And that is what is reflected, like I said, in the subsequent supporting documents.
Okay. Thank you, Mel, for that. Mr. Respecio, Director Respecio, the the comments that Mel made regarding an annual report that includes, you know, several things that she mentioned earlier, has these reports been given to your bond investitures?
Yes.
And has there been any discrepancies or concerns? Has it been a clean audit every year for these investitures?
Well, I'll just defer to GITA.
Okay, they're the one that oversees it then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
Yes, ma'am. And so, thank you, Senator. As 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 Director mentioned, to be in compliance with the bond, the Port Authority has cooperated in providing all supporting documents to our bond investors. And in fact, our bond investors have acknowledged the reporting, but also the progress of the Port Authority as described by a recent upgrade from, an outlook upgrade from negative to stable. And so I do believe that the back and forth, the annual reviews, and the constant communication that we have with our bond investors is yielding good results for us.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, can I get? It's kind of loud. It's hard to hear. I'm way back here in the back. If we can have some order. Mr. Director Respecio, you mentioned during the public hearing that as long as there's no change in the revenues that are projected to pay back the bond in this whole project and the changes that are going on, that you're here today to make those changes. Is there anything in here that would actually jeopardize or increase the revenues to the Port Authority for the for this whole particular project?
Senator Taidegui, I believe what the what the bond counsel said is, as long as there's no material change in revenue for the port, then this is absolutely doable. Everything that we're doing here only seeks to enhance and solidify the port's revenue. So we don't, the only thing that we can forego in my, in our mind is the building of an annex building, that $8 million, and how that $8 million could instead go to cover over the the HWRF shortfall. And so the $4 million in this fiscal year and the $4 million the next fiscal year that we've allocated from port revenue, that money can instead go toward the shortfall in the Gulf Pier. So I think what we're doing is we're exercising prudence to determine what are the priorities based on the money we have and and the needs that we have for today.
Thank you so much for that. I only have about a minute.
Can I also add, I also think you're talking about the 40% taxable income.
Yeah, we did talk about that. There was a 30%, and then there was a 40%. So there is nothing in 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 this legislation or would jeopardize that 40%, correct?
Yeah, and that was geared more toward the tenants at the new administration building. Had we had demolished the admin building and create office space for tenants as long as they wouldn't, isn't that taxable occurrence?
Mel, please.
That's correct. What what Administrator Respecio is referencing is a certain portion of the bonds were pledged as AMT. AMT means alternative minimum tax. And that references when a project has a public-private type of partnership nature. And what that means is that it's not 100%. So so all bonds issued by the government of Guam are triple tax exempt for our bond investors in the mainland. What that means is a bond investor in the mainland, they don't pay federal tax, they don't pay state tax, and they don't pay local city county tax. Here in Guam, we're not very familiar with that because we don't pay all those taxes. We just pay one tax, which is our state tax, which mirrors the federal tax code. A territorial debt has, is called triple tax exempt, meaning the bond investors pay no taxes on the interest they receive, the income they receive from the bonds. However, if the bond has a public-private nature to it, there is sometimes what's called, they are subject to something called AMT, which is an alternative minimum tax. It's just a type of transaction. And I believe that this particular bill, what what happens is when you reconfigure the type of debt, that you you have to make sure that your AMT holders are unaffected. Tina, is that more or less correct? Yes. You have to make sure that your AMT holders are unaffected. And again, that was referenced, I I don't believe it was referenced by OREC specifically in this letter, but that was something when the different projects were laid out, it was not a consideration. It was not a significant consideration for our board. The only AMT project is a 2 million, there's a couple of projects that's about 2, 2.5, about $10 million worth of projects. And those are still slated to occur at the same, I believe, at the same, they're still, they're still on the roster of projects to occur. And so from what I, there's there's no effect to AMT versus non-AMT.
Is there anything else? I know you were looking at something to to verify.
That's correct. No, that's that's correct. That's that's all.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll wait for the second round for more additional questions.
Thank you. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to the panel for being here. Senator Respecio, I guess the question is, what is the total amount in as far as the bond? I mean, the revenue that you have for all of these projects?
It's about a $76 million plus bond. But 30 million of that was used to refinance existing debt at the port. So you're only talking about $40 million worth of projects total.
Okay. Now, there was a discussion earlier about $15 million that you received for ARP. What was that money for?
Correct. And so when these amounts were determined in 2014, even in 2019, we've, we've, we have, we saw that these amounts were understated in 2019, even before the pandemic and the issues with the supply chain. The Hotel WRF project, after going through a series of procurement issues and finally bidding it out for a second time, what started out at 22 potential bidders only ended up with one bidder, Sumitomo Construction. They, the bid came in at $59 million, Senator, for a $23 million budget. And so the $59 million was negotiated down to 46 million. We took the 46 million in two phases. 36 million was for the WRF, and then 8 million was for the concrete slab. And the road was, is going to be funded by Federal Highway through the governor and Director Vince Ariola's good work there. And so the 36 million, and you subtract the 23 from that, the 13, 14 million shortfall obviously came from, had to come from somewhere. So at the time, the governor pledged $15 million to the Port Authority from the ARP, the same amount that she pledged to GPA, and the same amount, I believe, that she pledged to the airport. And so in exchange for the $15 million, she asked us not to even think about raising the tariffs for the next two fiscal years. So it's truly an economic recovery tool. And so that that $15 million, although originally was not supposed to go to any of these revenue bond-funded projects because of the situation, we had no choice, and so we put it there. And so if we relift the caps, if you allow these caps to be lifted, and we look at what are, is on the list, and we look at foregoing an annex building, for example, $8 million that could possibly be available, that $8 million can go over to HWRF. And the $8 million that we pledged for HWRF can go to the Gulf Pier shortfall or any other shortfall. It's just basically the ability to, you know, move monies around and so that we we don't have to use our port revenue funds as a first alternative.
Okay, so how much do you have left in your in your bond proceeds?
Well, we, if we look at all our expenses and what the estimates, new estimates are coming up, it's about, we still have a $29 million shortfall.
Okay, you have a shortfall.
Yeah, but that 29 million does not include the 15 million that we got from ARP. And it doesn't include the 8 million that we got, that we're going to use for this fiscal year, next fiscal year. So we believe that everything is within striking range if we don't have to be constrained to construct an annex building right now. The, I don't know why, oh, let me just say, this bill should not be contentious, Senator. It basically says, let us focus on the revenue generating to rehabilitate and secure the revenue generating assets of the port, and then all the other things can come later, which it should be.
No, I'm, you know, my my point here is, I'm not, I'm not going to argue, you know, what, which projects you're going to take priority over, which ones, okay? My my concern here is, okay, well, the projects that you do want to complete, okay? There is, then, there still exists, no matter what we do here, there still exists a shortfall.
Correct. But in the meantime, we were able to get a $22 million grant from MARAD for, to rehabilitate F1 through F6. So that 7 million, that's supposed to fund four projects. 3 million is coming from an economic development grant, and then the whole 22 million is coming from MARAD. And also, we have a matching portion of that. In some cases, it's 75, 25, and in other cases, it's 80, 20. And then most recently, we received a grant from MARAD again for $5.7 million for yard equipment, for tractors and top lifters. And so if we were not successful in getting that 5 million, 5.7 million dollar grant from MARAD, then that's $5.7 million that would have come from port funds. So we're always going to be aggressive through our chief planner here, Joe Havlana, and the team. We have a capital CIP manager, Mr. Clarence Leguta. And he comes to us from NAFAC, managed over a billion dollars' worth of NAFAC projects. So, you know, we have capacity at the port to be able to make strong arguments to go after these grants.
Okay. I guess, more of a visual person to find out, you know, where where you want to be able to reprogram and what you want to be able to do. Is there that such a listing? I mean, is the listing of, first off, what you were, what, you know, what you were allocated for, you know? And then based on historically, on your bids and stuff or in your assessments, you know, where you were short and everything, how you, how you're going to be able to do? Do you have that kind of a graph or that kind of a chart?
We do. It's also in the committee report, but we can make that available.
Okay. I'd like to be able to do that and then get a copy of that before I go on to round two. Okay, Madam Chair, so that we can do that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Turloki, Pito Turloki.
Good morning, panel. Before I start, you know, several of my questions, I just want to thank each and every one of you for for providing us the information that we're requesting. And I want to thank the the manager of Commercial Port and the staff for updating their 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 plans to increase and invigorate the the function of the of Commercial Port. One thing for sure is that we're facing a, like a 29 million deficit. Not deficit, but unfounded or founded. And then we do have the ARP, what, 15 million or something like that?
That's correct, Senator Pito.
So so your anticipation of your shortfall and all the requests that that you have requested for for bonds and grants, the 29 million is, well, I would say, your 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 budget right now on the grants and the ARP and and the the bonds, for sure, you you will have 29 million shortfall. So so in addressing the shortfall, what other funding resources that you would like to to approach and request for it?
Thank you for the question, Senator Pito. So we have, you're correct, we have a $29.2 million anticipated and projected shortfall with all these projects. That doesn't include the $15 million from the ARP money, and that doesn't include the $8 million that we're already going to get from the port funds for the next two fiscal years. So that's about 23 million, then the 8 million, that's 31 million. So we're within striking range of being able to do this if we forego such a project such as the annex building, that 8 million. And if if there's a need to do an annex building because our revenues are much better than we anticipated, then we would do an annex building. But we would only do an annex building after we secure money to get the three gantry cranes we need, after we secure money to get more yard equipment that we need. So it's just about giving the board the ability to make those determinations based on the priorities and based on the monies that we have.
So you anticipate that some of the the projects that you have have to be revamped or prioritized and according to to the needs of Commercial Port?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just kind of concerned about the the bond money and the the grants. Is there any guarantee that what you have requested would be given to Commercial Port?
Yeah, this money is already with the Commercial Port. And the the challenge we have is that the projects are identified and the amounts up to are identified. So in these projects, for example, there was $23 million, actually 13 million, allocated from the revenue bond for HWRF project. And then 10 million came from the Tiger Grant. But in order to have the procurement proceed, I asked the board to pass a resolution authorizing me as general manager to tap whatever available funding sources are there to cover over the shortfall. And the shortfall we identified was carried over by the $15 million ARP grant and also by the $8 million in port revenue. Had had we not been thinking about how to comply with this without jeopardizing any certification law, then we would have been stuck in the water. We would have had to come to the legislature and say, remove this or else we can't proceed. We've gone as far as we can to the point where we cannot proceed because you have $8 million tied up in the funding for the annex building that we need to allocate that to other projects so we can have the procurement process proceed.
Yes, so at this point in time, we are facing like a $29 million deficit. So you might have to deviate from some of the the less concerning programs that you have. Maybe deviate from some of the less lesser importance of of the projects that you have. You think that would be possible?
Yeah, if this bill were to pass and Governor Leon Gol signs it into law, I think we can have enough of existing funds, the money from the revenue bond, for example. That 8 million for the annex building can be taken, carried over and fund the the shortfalls that we see for the Field Line project. So we believe that we would have sufficient funds to be able to cover us over and move us forward.
Thank you, Rory. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks.
To the panel, thank you very much again.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Senator Rogel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I stated earlier, I do have questions, but I was not here during the first round, so I believe I forfeited my first round. So I will wait until the second round to ask questions. I wasn't here during the first round because, yes, I had to leave to pick up my children. And I might add that my Republican colleagues were encouraging me to leave at the time because they were hoping there would not be a quorum. So I left and I went to pick up my kids. I forfeited my time, so I will wait until the second round, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Rogel. Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Ruscio, you were mentioning about, I guess, set priorities within the and what you guys will be doing. If there's not enough funding for the annex, then you're going to ensure that first funding will be made for gantry cranes and things of that sort, ground equipment. How many gantry trains do we currently have at the Port Authority?
Thank you, Senator Ada. We have three gantry cranes.
Are they all operational?
They are.
What's the lifespan of each gantry crane or remaining lifespan?
They're all operational. And according to the Public Utilities Commission's service life study on each grant, they were to expire nine years sooner than what was told to the legislature and then eventually vetted through that whole PUC process. The one of the gantry cranes needs to be taken offline. The first gantry cranes needs to be taken offline in 2026, then the second one, 2028, the third one in 2030. I'll tell you, though, our maintenance crew, our EQMR division, they're doing a really good job at maintaining those three gantry cranes. We're currently taking down the two inoperable SDS gantry cranes through a private contractor. And we also have submitted a grant to MARAD for forty-seven million dollars to replace all three gantry cranes.
I see. You know, because on the on the proposed legislation here, it has, I guess, accordingly, the priorities which we set forth, which would be, one, local match with transportation, two, construction of an annex building, three would be the replacement, relocation, water lines, four, extension and repair, and then seven, all remaining balances, any shall be allocated to provide for supplemental funding for the procurement of a new gantry crane. So and you just stated earlier that an annex building would not be built unless we had the funding for gantry cranes and ground equipment. And you know how it is in the legislature, when we put it into into statute that this is the priorities as listed, do you think that the gantry train should be listed above the annex buildings stating that, because you already stated that you won't build an annex building unless we have the funding for a gantry crane and ground equipment?
The the way I read this list is not a list of priorities, of most priority to least priority. Number seven was, as a result, when Senator Clint Rogel was our oversight chair, he wanted to just put that in just as a feel-good, in case any monies left over, put it over to the replacement of the gantry cranes, just so that the legislature continues to set as a matter of policy what the priority should be. And and I'll tell you, Senator Ada, and every time we talk to our regulators and our grantors in any conversation we have, for instance, we partnered with the CNMI to do a regional resiliency assessment program, the RRAP, through Homeland Security and CISA. And so that is going to take a look at our vulnerabilities, the threats with cybersecurity and and natural and man-made disasters. We managed to make the argument that if the gantry cranes go down, never mind any cyber attack or any natural disaster, that also needs to be factored in. And this is why we're getting mileage on and communicating our needs to to MARAD with respect to what the conditions of those gantry cranes are.
Yeah, because I remember several legislatures ago where we had the issue with the gantry cranes and they were down. We had an issue with cargo being unloaded until we got the Port of Los Angeles cranes in and up and running. So we don't want to find ourselves in that same situation again, being that, you know, we're looking at reprogramming or even removing the caps of certain projects and then looking at having the gantry cranes be on the wayside or, you know, ground handling equipment or any anything of that sort.
You're absolutely correct. And we're not just waiting on MARAD to tell us whether or not this is our second attempt to get a grant for gantry cranes. We also have a commitment already from USDA to fund up as much as one, maybe two gantry cranes, using the the container surcharge as a pledgeback revenue source. And also, because we're not task waiting, our consultants, our owner agents, one of their task orders for the SES gantry support, they're already have developed the the specifications for a IDIQ to be released for. And we're 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 in procurement, we're, instead of saying we have enough money for one gantry crane, what we're doing is we're doing IDIQ so that if we have money for one gantry crane, two gantry cranes, or three gantry cranes, we don't need to begin the procurement all over again as monies come in. We're doing the same with all the yard equipment. We have an IDIQ for each yard equipment at the port. For instance, we have a DARA grant that gives us four tractors. Sorry, nine, nine tractors now, and but we have an IDIQ for one tractor. So that as money comes in, we just place the order with the procurement established vendor and we don't have to go back to the drawing board.
Thank you for that. And, you know, because I know that over the years, the procurement or even the manufacturing of gantry cranes takes years to to happen. And you said that the first gantry crane that will be coming offline will be in 2026. Has any of that talks already been started and where are we at in that process of actually acquiring a new gantry crane once that one goes down or in the process of bidding out?
So we have been in, there's been active effort for over a year, even probably longer. And so we hope to publish the bid for the IDIQ for the gantry crane, maybe January, February. We want to give that a whole year of procurement, barring any protests. It takes about two years to order and for them to put the gantry crane specifications together and have that shipped to Guam. And so 2023, hopefully, the award will be given, 2024, the order we place, so you have 24, 25, and then by 2026. Even though the service life is looking like, for example, 2026, that's the most ideal time to retire, but these three gantry cranes continue to get OSHA certification year after year after year. The perennial maintenance, the welders, the crane mechanics, we recently hired six crane mechanics. I think majority of them were from DZSP. And so we don't have a capacity issue. The the guys, as you know, are doing a really good job to to keep those cranes and yard equipment operational, even corrosion control.
Yeah. And, you know, I appreciate that OSHA has certified. You know, you know how it is when doctors say, yeah, you're healthy and then something goes down unexpectedly, the cranes, and we don't want any stoppage because of the lack of a crane to to unload the cargo from the ship. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Mendiola, you were mentioning earlier about the alternative minimum tax. Does this, with the, I guess, removing the caps or anything like that and the the possibility of the revenue generating projects, would that, is there any possibility for that to be considered perhaps as a private activity, changing the designation of the port's bond? Or you don't think there will be enough percentage there to?
It looks, I consulted, my colleague and I were just discussing, in fact, just a little bit more in depth. And the project says amended by public law thirty-five dash forty-four, which restated as a different number of projects. That maintained the threshold for alternative minimum tax with that amended law. And then subsequent to that, I think we're all aware about the increased cost of construction. And and I think Director Ruscio has, Administrator Ruscio has also articulated much about the increased cost of construction. And so conferring with my colleague and I, we do believe that alternative minimum tax remains comfortably at the level it needs to be.
So we won't have to worry about that with with the bondholders and?
That's correct. We don't have to worry about that with the bondholders at this at this point, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's the only questions I'll have this round.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Duennius.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the panel for being here. I really only have one question. It might be redundant, but I'm going to ask it for my edification. So as I read through the bill, the items that are aligned are basically to remove the caps on those outlined projects. So I don't see anything with adjustment to the gross amount, just to put it on the record. So this is to remove the caps on the projects for realignment, but not authorizing any additional funding.
That's correct, Senator Duennius.
Okay. That's why I just wanted, because, I mean, the way I see it from my perspective is, you know, that you're you're requesting this this tool, if you will, to do what you need to do. But then if we were talking about different amounts and things like that, that would be a different story. I'm sure you would agree with that, right?
Yes, thank you, Senator Duennius.
Okay, so so you're looking, just to reiterate, you've done and you're looking to leverage other funds available as these caps are removed to accommodate whatever the new priorities would be, so that that would be the other funding source, not any additional bond proceeds, our bond going out for any additional bond money.
Correct, which is what we already have.
Yeah, like I said, I know it probably sounded redundant, but I wanted to make sure that I had a full understanding, because that's how I'm reading the bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duennius. That completes our first round of questions for the panel. We'll begin with the second round of questions now. Senator Tiede, do you have any questions?
Just for future reference, Madam Chair, or anyone who takes the chair on this, I think we should, you know, make it fair and have other people besides mine going first all the time. If we can try on another, that's what other senators do, so who take the chair. But anyways, Mr. Ruscio, you received about, what, fifteen million dollars in ARP funding to the port?
That's correct.
And what is that being used on?
So the fifteen million dollars that the governor allocated to the port from the ARP, she didn't say use it for HWRF. She said, use this to cover over any CIP shortfall or if you have, if you don't have CIP shortfalls, use it to purchase yard equipment, cranes. So it was very general in a sense. There was no specificities with regards to that allocation, other than the fact that we should not have been thinking about raising tariffs for at least two fiscal years, which raising tariffs has never been on our mind or top of top of mind for for the governor or for the lieutenant governor, for any one of us, especially the board.
So what have you spent it on so far?
Oh, sorry. So the fifteen, so the HWRF project came in at fifty-nine million dollars for a twenty-three million dollar budget. So the team negotiated it down to forty-six million. And then third, we asked them to divide it into two phases. Phase one, just what it would cost to rehabilitate the WRF, what it would cost to do the concrete slab, the electrical work and all that, and then what it would cost for the road being paved into HWRF. The governor was able to get, request Director Ariola to use federal highway money to put up to three million dollars for the road. So phase one with the thirty-six million, then you had a twenty-three million dollar budget theoretically, thirteen million from this revenue bond and ten million from the Tiger Grant. We had a shortfall there, so the fifteen million dollars was put into phase one. The shortfall for phase two, which we have a contractual-
So you use a full fifteen million on phase one?
Correct.
Okay, so that's it. Used all the ARP funding. That's that's my question.
Correct.
That's all. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruscio. And you said something that triggered as well. According to, you know, public law thirty-five dash forty-four that was passed, specified that the reopening or reprogramming of the revenue bond proceeds would not increase terminal tariff. I mean, it's it's on page five, I believe, page five, lines seven and thirteen. This is public law thirty-five dash forty-four. So my question is, as Bill, you know, this bill, two-nine-eight, did not reinforce this requirement. For the record, will the requirement that no terminal tariffs will be increased as a result of the reallocation of the funds?
I, you can check with legal counsel, but I believe it's still there. We're just amending those portions of that statute that pertain to the funding of these projects.
Okay, so you're not-
It's an act to amend. It doesn't amend and replace.
So wouldn't be an issue to actually reinforce that section in this bill too, then, right?
It'd be your prerogative, definitely.
Okay, and BB Mar, you know, their fiscal note said that the the general manager, which yourself, stated that Bill two-nine will not have, will have zero fiscal impact, correct? And if that's the case, will the will the zero fiscal impact only occur in the use of the bond funds?
The zero fiscal impact to the general fund as the bill is not seeking any general fund appropriations.
Okay, we do, okay, so that is what you meant by zero impact. Okay. You mentioned the Tiger Grant earlier. What is the status on that?
The status of the Tiger Grant is, we were given the notice to proceed for the Tiger Grant after doing all the environmental assessments, all the environmental requirements. The status of the Tiger Grant is, it's on a reimbursable basis, so we don't have the ten million. The ten million will be reimbursed to the port upon substantial completion of the of the of the time that it's going to take to complete the the project. Now, this ten million dollar Tiger Grant was pledged for all three phases. It was pledged for the rehabilitation of the WRF, it was pledged for the concrete slab work, it was pledged for the road. In our discussions with MARAD and our communications to them, that federal highway will fund up to three million for the road, they responded that it's possible they may take the three million and subtract it from the ten million. In our discussions with MARAD, we communicated to them that in order to comply with Bi-American, we have to spend twelve million to get ten million. And so we have been petitioning MARAD for almost two years now, asking for a waiver of the Bi-American. For example, the steel beams alone, it's going to take about eighteen months if we were to comply with Bi-American versus six months if we are to get the steel beams from the same source the Department of Defense got the steel beams from to do the Navy pier. And so the irony is those steel beams coming in for the Navy project come through the Port Authority of Guam. And in all of our meetings with even DOD, Indo-PACOM, and JRM generals, they're they're concerned, even Admiral Nicholson, Joint Region Marianus, wrote a letter to the secretary, to the governor, which was provided to the Secretary of Transportation, that the irony is that he gets to get steel beams from a non-Bi-American source for a military project, but yet his neighbor across the ocean, the Port Authority of Guam, does not get to have that same waiver. And so we're proceeding as if though we got the waiver in the interest of time and and the fact that we're going to see almost fifteen billion dollars in military construction over the next fiscal years, up to fiscal year 2029. And in order to make it so that the Port Authority is not the choke point, we're just proceeding as if though we got the Bi-American. The board passed a resolution last week in its in its board meeting, concurring with management's approach to dealing with the challenges with Bi-American. And part of the transmitter of this resolution is the Secretary of Transportation.
Okay. Is there anything in in the readjustment of this, you know, some of the projects that were, was actually initiated in, I first, first public, public law thirty-four dash seventy, if I'm not mistaken, you know, all the projects there. And then now you're readjusting that, those projects to other things. Is there anything in there that you plan on to revisit again that was important in that? I I know you're trying to prioritize prioritize certain projects in there, but is any of these potentially able to come back that you've decided to, you know, put aside?
Well, I tell you, we have to do everything. The goal is to do- Well, I tell you, we have to do everything. The goal is to do everything. Even if we're going to do these CIP projects funded by this revenue bond, if we're to truly repair F1 to F6 to the extent that we need to repair it, we're looking at three hundred million dollars. And so this is only gonna give us a service life extension of five to seven years. This is very concerning for the position that we're in at the Port Authority of Guam over the last decades. So we're looking at the, the seven million dollars that the legislature brought down from the seventeen and a half million for the demolition of the administration building and the construction of the administration building, that identified four projects, as you know, F1 rehabilitation, terminal operating system, financial management system, and also the fill connectivity line. The fill connectivity line was funded through a grant through Economic Development Authority. We had budgeted through the board, two and a half million for the financial management upgrade. They probably are spending around two million. Now with the terminal operating system, we're undergoing a analysis through our owner agent to determine if we're gonna continue with NAVIS, or if there's any operating system out there that will, that will meet the demands at the Port Authority of Guam, specific to the Port Authority of Guam. And so those projects, even though listed, are, are their priorities. And, and what we're saying is, even though there's money from the revenue bond, we're not gonna tap that as the first go-to. We have a very aggressive planning division, Mr. Johalana with Chief Planner, and we're gonna pursue all of these grants. For example, we received the twenty-two million dollar grant for the rehabilitation of F1 through F6. That's twenty-two million that could have been theoretically funded from this revenue bond, or some portions thereof. We received a five-point-seven million dollar grant from MARAD for yard equipment. That five-point-seven million could have come from either this, or could have come from port revenue. And so the way we, we are gonna take care of phase two of the HWRF project is we certified four million dollars for the, for the board's approval for, for this fiscal year, and four million dollars from port revenue for next fiscal year. And so if we get, I'm sorry, you-
Yeah, I understand what you're, you're going-
If you support this and you agree to lift all the funding, where this eight million dollars that we're not going to spend from port money over two fiscal years, that's money that can go to cover over other shortfalls. That's possibly eight million dollars that could be used to fund portions of the crane that we need, you know?
Um, Mr. Rispio, you know, like in some areas, or buildings, or assessments of buildings, there's, the Army Corps of Engineers comes in and they assess something that, what is priority, one, two, three, or four, you go down that line. Does a port have such a thing where somebody comes in there and saying, okay, well, you know, based on our assessment, and the only thing I can think of Army Corps of Engineers, you know, at that, this point, come in to say, what is priority that needs to be addressed first at the port?
Yeah. We, the Army Corps of Engineer comes in when it's water work, or something, some work inside the water. That's the extent of their, but we do, we, we have beefed up our engineering division with the retirement of the former port engineer manager. We were able to acquire Mr. Masood, to, well, to Murray, yeah. Someone said something else. But, but Masood is the port chief engineer. We've hired, I think, I want to say, three engineers over the last three and a half years. We've retrofitted that division and we're really, we're, we're really building capacity in all areas of the port.
Is there any report out?
There also, there's a report done by WSP, and so there's assessments, because part of their, part of their, their work is to also look at the aging facilities. But I'll tell you, what we're faced with, Senator Tidigui, in Warehouse One, for example, the statutory budget was two million. That bid came in at almost five million. It came in a little over, little over five million, five-point-eight. So I canceled the procurement process on Warehouse One. Because do you put six million into a building that's over fifty years old? Or do you pause and then just do the most basic requirements for the health and for the safety of the employees in that building? But the big plan for Warehouse One eventually is to level it, like entirely demolish it, and then probably build four stories high. And then that area in front of Warehouse One can also be used to service vessels to discharge those.
So I guess my question is that, is there a plan at the port that has been looked at by those who are engineers to determine what is number one priority, number two? And you said you've hired people at Masood, who you brought on board-
Yeah.
-to do that.
We do.
And so I'm just wondering, where is that report that says, what is priority?
We do, we do have that assessment done by WSP, which is what's guiding our decision that we take up to the board for their, for their approval.
Where can we find that, Roy?
We can, it's-
That report? Is it online?
Yeah, we'll provide it to you, all the senators.
It's not online?
Is it online? No.
Should it be online?
We'll provide it to you.
Yeah, should it be online, just to be transparent?
Yeah.
The WSP? This is the whole entire port?
It's, it's, hold on. Yes, hi. Thank you for that question, Senator Tidigui.
Your name, please, just for the record.
My name is Joe Johalana, the chief planner at the port. You know, all the, all the projects that you have before you, those are all priority projects that GM Rispio had mentioned. They are priority, because those were the ones that we provided for the bond. With regards to damage assessment reports, to support those particular projects, we do have them. In fact, one of the damage summary report that actually supported the BARAD application is for the twenty-two million dollar recently awarded project, and that's one for F1 to F6. In order for us to have got, received that grant, we would have to provide that damage summary report. And the, that report was provided for by WSP. So like the GM had mentioned, first of all, those assessments that were identified for the bond project, they have been vetted through, and those were the ones that were provided for, for the bond. But any new ones that we have going forward, it's always being supported by assessments. And we do have that, and we can readily provide that for you.
Okay, and, and you can put that online, right? I mean, there's nothing in there that's going to jeopardize any bond covenants or anything like that. If you can place it online, just to be more transparent on where the port is going, and what is the priority of the port, to ensure the safety first of our employees that are there, and of course, the, your clients that come and utilize the point, the, the port. And also, you know, I mean, that's, that's first and foremost, the safety, right? So some of these buildings, like you mentioned, are very old. And, you know, to function as a, you know, a port that would provide, you know, the means for this island in a safety mechanism. I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe. You were saying something?
Yes, hi. I was saying that the 2013 master plan, it has those assessments, so each-
It hasn't been updated since?
It's online. The 2013 master plan is online.
Has it been updated?
We're doing the 2022 master plan update now.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, and those, the 2013 master plan has all the conditional assessments.
It's, you're doing the update on the twenty-two? It's, we've got two me, two weeks before we end this, you know, year twenty-two, so when is that supposed to come out?
Yeah, January, and then we can call it the 2023 master plan. Was actually the 2020 master plan update, which we started early on in 2019. But two things, we kept adding to it, and also the pandemic. But the things that we've been, we've been able to implement, big portions of the master plan that don't require any legislative approval or PUC approval. It's just how are we going to restructure ourselves as a brand? And how are we gonna position ourselves to prepare for this military construction?
Okay, thank you. I look forward to seeing that master plan, the 2022, or hence 2023, in January.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Blaz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank, Senator, I want to thank you, I've got the reporter. And I'm gonna, my, my question is gonna be referenced to what, this chart here, okay, with, with respect to the, to the bill. Can I start with the rehabilitation of HWRF and the access rule that's found on page five, line twelve? Okay, and the bill here would strike out the amount of thirteen million. My concern, well, I'm not concerned, but can you explain the local match for the Tiger Grant program? What is that local match?
There is no local match pledged. It's, it was a partner to, and I know it was the linchpin in the whole getting this revenue bond in 2018, was, was, HWRF is big, it plays a big role in the whole port modernization, and the ability to have an alternate WRF for the event that there's congestion in the main WRFs.
So there is, but, so, so, so there is no local match for the Tiger Grant?
They, they, the thirteen million for, was pledged to add to the ten million, which gave us twenty-three million, but the project came in at fifty-nine million. But if we don't get the, the reimbursement, because we won't get the waiver from Bi-American, for example, there's two funding sources for the ten million. It's either port reserve funds, or it's gonna either come from this revenue bond reserves.
Okay. I guess, you know, with regard to wanting to make sure that this thing is accurate, then there's no need for the, there's no need for that local match language there, verbiage is there?
I mean, you could just, it doesn't hurt to keep it there, because I believe that the thirteen million was going to be partnered with the ten million for the HWRF. Because the Tiger Grant was for the rehabilitation of HWRF, which is the WRF, the concrete slab, and the road.
Okay. Okay, so let's go to the next one. Which is your, actually based on, on, on the bill, okay? The administration building upgrade infrastructure, ten million. That's on page, page five, line seventeen?
Correct.
Um, in the approximate amount of ten million, four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. And your chart here says it's pending the bid process. What is, what do you anticipate?
We anticipate from this ten-point-four million, we anticipate upwards of two million to take care of the concrete spouting and other areas, the administration building, that would increase the, the service life of that building. And then the balance was to construct an annex building right next to it.
Okay, so just the, just the admin building construction alone, you're looking at possibly ten-point-four to twelve-point-four, is what you're?
Uh, the, the maximum cap here is ten-point-four.
Yeah, but you're looking at-
Yeah, but it would, it would be for both. They would, it's possible to construct the annex building about six to eight million dollars. And then, then also the spouting repair and other repair to the current administration building would be around two million.
So the annex, let's say, let's take the low end of six, and then the additional money you need for the main building, two, that's eight.
Correct. That's why I keep saying that if this bill were to pass and sign into law, that the board will be able to be in a position to say forego the construction of a new annex building and take the eight million and cover over some of the other shortfalls in this twenty-nine million dollar projected shortfall we're seeing.
Okay, because if you go to, if you go to the chart that you provide to me, with regard to the variance on this thing, then you, is it safe to assume that we can add eight million to that variance?
Correct.
Okay.
And you can also add in the fifteen million, because the fifteen million allocation is not in this chart.
Okay.
That's why we're saying, Senator Blaz, if you take the fifteen million, and the eight million from the annex, and the eight million from the port funds, that's gonna cover over. If every amount that we're looking at comes in within those amounts that we're projecting for today's dollars.
Understood.
So it's, it's doable, is what we're saying.
Yeah.
Only with this bill.
Okay. And it says the, on line, page five, line twenty-one, you're striking out the remaining balance of approximately seven million, four-hundred. Where is that? Where, where is that? What did I just do? Where's that seven million dollars from?
So originally, for the, for the demolition and construction of a new administration building, there was a seventeen-point-five million dollar original budget. And so when we came before you, the first go-around, to bring that amount down to ten-point-four, we saw this seven-point-four balance, and we've asked it if it could be used for the fill one, F1 repair, if it could be used for the toss, the fill connectivity line, and the terminal operating system.
So you already used it?
No, we got the Economic Development Authority grant to agree to a three-point-two million dollar grant for the fill connectivity line. We budgeted through the board about two and a half million for the financial management system, so we used about two million of that. So there's still some balances there, but we're, 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 we're trying to continue on with this terminal operating system study. If we're gonna continue with the current provider, NAVIS, or do something entirely different, based on what's out there in the market, and the other, um, the terminal operating system, the F1, the financial management system.
So that's the four-point-ninety-eight million that you're seeing in the top of your chart, right? That's, that's what we're seeing?
Yes.
The balance? Okay. Let's go to the next one. Relocation, replacement, relocation of water lines, six million. This is, this project is completed?
No, this project was recently awarded, but we've been waiting for SHPO to sign off on the permit. We, we are also required to do a habs and a hairs for the entire port property, which we are undertaking.
Was that, I'm sorry. Say that again?
The habs, it's all the whole SHPO requirement, and the hairs, H-A-E-R-S. So that way, when we do, and the habs and the hairs for all the port property, when we get a grant, we're not, we don't have to go through this whole SHPO process anymore. Everything is gonna be done in a more expedited manner. Even technical assistance grants that we get are subject to SHPO signing off, believe it or not. So this water relocation came in, we had a six million dollar budget. It actually came in at eight-hundred-twenty-four thousand less than what's allocated here. So that, that water line project, it's on it, underway. The EQMR repair building, that came in at a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall. And so the balance is going to be covered over from port revenue.
Okay.
Like I said, with the repair warehouse one, the bids came in at three-point-two million over the two million. So we put a pause on that. And then Gulf Pier, there's a two-million-dollar allocation, but it's gonna be much higher than that.
Okay. I noticed that on both the Warehouse One repair and the Gulf Pier, that you expended some of that money already. What was that money expended for?
Yeah, for the A and E design.
Okay, so there, so there has been, and this is in that design, this is where you found your, you're basically short on being able to. Okay. So basically, let's just go with, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds about the eight million dollars, you know, or the fifteen million dollars. The, the total shortfall here is about twenty-nine-point-two-seven, twenty-nine-two-seven-five. And you said that you were pursuing other grants, or grants, to be able to try to cover some of those shortfalls. What I'm getting at, Senator, is, is, again, the concern that I had, which was brought up by the speakers, is, is- What I'm getting at, Senator, is, is, again, the concern that I had, which was brought up by the speakers, is, is not wanting to see that as a result of this thing and the necessity for this, that we, we, you know, we raise tariffs, we raise fees, okay? I just want to make sure of that. But at the same time, we want to also make sure that in giving you this flexibility, you know, that you have the ability then to take care of more in the punch list. You know, than, than you would have if you had left, we had just left you with, with these, with these caps, okay? Are you, so you're actively pursuing new grants and stuff to be able to cover this, at least twenty-nine million dollar shortfall?
Yes, Senator Blas, in fact, we received a twenty-two million dollar grant to do the F one to F six repairs. We received a five point seven million dollar grant to do, to get some yard equipment. We received a one point two million dollar grant to do a feasibility study to take a look at what are, what are our current overall needs of the port from the, from the W A R Fs, from the facilities. And then the other phase is what kind of opportunities can we present ourselves to the Department of Defense and the PACOM because of geopolitical issues? The port's literally the tip of the spear in this whole military readiness and they recognize through letters of support that we have from Admiral Nicholson, from some members of Congress, from our grantors, they recognize the role that the Port Authority Guam has and plays in relation to the whole geopolitical climate. And so we're positioning ourselves correctly. It's never our intent to increase the tariff because that's not the right way to go. But if we can, if we can develop more revenue sources such as the joint use of hotel W A R F, H W A R F, for example, the militaries are already communicating, they have congestion on the birthing of their military vessels. And so H W A R F is looking to be an attractive alternative for them. The other alternative attractive for them, and by the way, that's not gonna mean joint use is not gonna prevent us from using H W A R F for an alternate port for us and also the, the home porting of a cruise ship, for example. And with the Area A, with the fill storage, that has the potential for that being the fill storage of the Pacific for Department of Defense's needs. So we want to capitalize on all these opportunities and our, our bond rating right now is stable with a positive outlook. When we have the ability to go out and refinance these bonds, we will, we're in discussions with GITA. But if we develop more revenue sources and, for example, increases in throughput because of Area A or because of the use of H W A R F, then we can talk about going after another bond, pledging those revenue sources as repayment sources and getting the money that we need to really fix our W A R Fs, our facilities and if we can't get the merit grant, for example, because of Bi-American prohibitions, because they don't manufacture gantry cranes in the United States, we have a potential to go after USDA loan, pledging the crane, the container surcharge as a repayment source. But we don't want to make that our first resort, we want to go after these grants.
Okay. And going after these, first off, do we have any Department of Defense designation for the, for, for the port? I know that we were working on.
We were designated a strategic port. At the time, the fifty million dollars was received for the port modernization. We're no longer a strategic port, we're one level down, but we could, a special consideration port. It only means that when we want to go back to a strategic port, we can petition merit to do so. But being a special consideration port only means that we didn't have to comply with all the annual reporting requirements.
Okay, but is, is there an attempt to go back to get that designation? I mean, I, I would, I think that as you're wrapping this thing up, you know, and we lose that, we lose that status.
No, there is, Senator Blas, because, and that's one of the things on the table, is to go back and get the strategic port designation.
Okay, last question. How much do you have in your, in your port revenues?
I think we have about twenty million last reported in our reserves.
Okay, well, my time is up, but I would be interested to find out what strategically or what plans do you have with that, with your reserves?
Yeah, the twenty million is to cover over shortfalls, is to, yeah.
Okay, well, my time's up, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blas, Senator Trelawney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to go back to Public Law thirty-five, forty-four and I want to address this to Mrs. Mindiola. With all the projects that we have, does thirty-five, forty-four give you the authority to reprogram the funding?
Thank you for that question, Senator. I believe thirty-five, forty-four reprogrammed funding from the original lineup, the original, there was an original roster with approximately forty-seven point five million dollars in projects to another new roster of projects at forty-five point three million dollars. The projects were articulated as far as EQMR, H W A R F, Revitalization Project, Annex Building, Gulf Pier, Warehouse One and Waterline Replacement, Relocation, F one Fuel Pier, F three, F four, and F six Waterfront Projects.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Mindiola. And the reason why I ask that question because I, I tend to agree with Senator Duñez regarding, you know, the, the removing the cap of some of this funding. So I guess Rory is in agreement with that, right Rory? Okay, another thing that I wanted to ask is the, is there any other projects that requires, you know, federal mandates?
Yes, Senator Trelawney, all of the projects require Bi-American compliance.
All of the projects?
If it's funded from a federal grant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney, Senator Rogel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for Port GM, Respecho. So just to sort of recap everything, first of all, this bill does not appropriate any new funding, does not identify any new funding or bond borrowing or anything, correct?
That's correct, Senator Rogel, thank you.
The bill just seeks to remove caps that were placed on specific capital improvement projects.
That's correct, the ones listed in the, in the bill.
The ones listed in the bill. What, what would happen if we did not pass this bill?
Well, what, what would happen is you would have upwards of eight million dollars stuck into build an annex building. You would be, the legislature will be, by not passing this, will force us to do something that we're entirely not prepared to do. We're, we're not prioritizing office space, for example. This bill not passed will not allow us to go after the revenue generating assets of the port to protect the W A R Fs, to address the Gulf Pier, which is a, another fill line. It would not allow us to, you know, to, to move forward with the, with the modernization project and would not get us closer to the port being prepared for the military readiness and also the organic needs of the community. But Senator Rogel, can I just add that we had been hoping, and we, for this bill, if we, to pass, if we did not ask the board to pass that resolution authorizing me as general manager to certify other funds as are available, like, for example, if we didn't innovatively think of how can we apply the governor's fifteen million dollar ARP allocation to the port for the H W A R F project and, and still be complying with our certification laws? Still be complying with, procurement begins and ends with the certification that the funds are available when you requisition a project. If we didn't have the board say, okay, we understand that there's funding caps on each of these projects, we're gonna recognize those funding caps, but we're gonna authorize management to certify other funds that are available. So we're at this juncture now and it, we didn't lose any time by the bill still being before us in discussion. We're at this juncture though, where we're gonna have to decide as a matter of public policy, what you'd like to see the port undertake in terms of its priorities, whether it's buildings or whether it's protecting the current revenue streams.
One of the items listed in the bill is the repair of Gulf Pier. If the cap isn't lifted, what will you do with Gulf Pier?
Like I said, there's a twelve million dollars that's been allocated for the Gulf Pier project. We're already looking at an amount that's much higher than that and I don't want to say what that amount is and, and the consequence also of listing all these amounts. And was talked about earlier, it, it kind of gives the potential bidder an idea of what is available to bid. What was also a deterrent in the bidding of H W A R F, for example, there was twenty-two prospective bidders that were interested. But when they took a look at the, the project budgeted amount of twenty-three million, they said, you guys are dreaming. And we know they said we're dreaming because after we only got, we got no bidders the first time around. So through procurement, we surveyed all twenty-two companies and asked them, what was your disinterest? You were, you came interested in the project, you didn't even submit a bid, what were your issues? One of the issue was twenty-three million dollars for, someone said it would cost upwards of eighty million. I mean, that's the, the range, right? It's with all the Bi-American constraints, the availability of steel. In the, in the, in the, in our contract, we're giving sumo tommo construction, like whatever bid that they use, whatever price that they submit for the cost of steel, those are only good for forty-eight hours. The availability of steel in the United States is such, as such, where it takes eighteen months versus six months. And we're also hearing that the steel manufacturers are just holding it like currency. The longer they release it, the more the value goes up and those are the experiences. And so in surveying all these twenty-two companies, what we needed to do is again, ask the board by resolution to make it very clear in the bidding process that although you're seeing twenty-three million, the general managers of, has the ability to tap port reserve funds or other grants or other funding that may become available. And so that gave the one bidder thankfully the comfort level to, to pursue their submission. And even at fifty-nine million through Clarence Legutin and the team, we said that fifty-nine million is too high, get it within striking range and so they negotiated down to forty-six million. And we don't have forty, we didn't have forty-six million, so they broke it up into two phases. Our, our focus really, if, if we just end up with a rehabilitated W A R F and a concrete slab, that is already the success story. When we had the groundbreaking for H W A R F, Admiral Nicholson was one of the last people to leave and he is already thinking about how he would get Department of Defense money to probably dredge up to forty feet. He's, in his mind, he's thinking of great potential for that to, to be used as an alternate W A R F for the Navy's needs. And so I think it's a win-win if they're going to put money in, raise it to a standard that's acceptable to DOD, where the community can still use it, where the port can still have access to it, where the cruise ship industry can thrive, where it could be an alternate W A R F. I think we can, we can pursue those, those opportunities and that's what our feasibility study will determine.
So with the current caps that are in place, you guys are having difficulty even getting bids on some of these projects because of the caps that are in place?
Yeah, absolutely, Senator Rogel, that's, that's the challenge. They, they look at what we need, they look at what we have, and they say, thanks, but no thanks. Especially because it's a very competitive environment right now with all of the, not only military construction, civilian construction. So, but we didn't come to you guys early on and say, hey, these are what the challenges we foresee. We just had to kind of go through it. So we can have the data to show that we're at this juncture and we're grateful that our Oversight Chair, Senator Nelson, has introduced this bill and is doing everything possible to get all fifteen members of legislature to see that this is not a controversial bill, maybe because I'm behind it. It's very contentious, it's not contentious, maybe because I'm behind it. But what's behind me also is a great team at the port, but what's behind me also is three years of clean audits with no findings of fault. What's behind me is a port that stayed a hundred percent operational throughout the pandemic, but also we're making money. We went from a net negative hundred four thousand in twenty-eighteen to making seven and a half million the first year. And it's not because of raising tariffs, it's because we're charging per the tariff. So with all this experience, I couldn't come to you in twenty-nineteen and say, this is all we need. You'll look at me and say, go away, you don't have any experience running a port authority, but I needed the three and a half years to demonstrate that capacity and also to show that we have the capacity because of the kind of team that we have. I'm hoping that we can get unanimous support on this bill so that the bondholders can see that there's no contention, that the legislature supports what the board and what the governor wants to do. We also didn't come and say, this is what we need, we ran it to the board, they passed the resolution, the governor reviewed it, she methodically analyzed it and then she authorized me per the resolution to go to the legislature and see if you guys will have the appetite to do something like this.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Rogel, Senator Perez. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to everyone who's here answering our questions. I just want to just clarify, get one clarification and I did provide the copy of the letter that Director Respecho sent to the Chair, Mr. Senator San Augustine, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And on page two, if you look at the, the last major bullet point and then the sub-bullet point, the first sub-bullet point, it states, under the tax certificate of the authority, section one point five C, purpose of financing, forty percent of the seventeen point five million can be reprogrammed without triggering the forty percent taxable income ratio. Okay, so if you can clarify that and I guess my concern, my only concern is whether this removing caps would have an effect on that, on triggering the forty percent taxable income? And if there's language that we can put in the bill to mitigate that, if that's necessary? Uh, yes, Mel, if you can respond.
Uh, thank you, Senator, for that question. So the original project, the original bond issuance discussed AMT projects. And those forty percent AMT was a new admin building, Gulf Pier AMT, Warehouse One AMT, Waterline Replacement AMT and a new admin building project, sixty percent AMT.
Can you go over that slowly?
Sure.
So the AMT is?
I'll go over the amounts as well.
Okay.
The new administration building, which is sixty percent non-AMT or forty percent AMT, is ten point five million dollars. The Gulf Pier project is about two point five million, two point six million dollars. The Warehouse One project is about, is three point one million dollars. The Waterline Replacement is about seven point five million dollars. And the new admin building is about, is sixty percent of seven million dollars. In the new lineup, amended under Public Law thirty-five, forty-four, the projects are still stated, we're Gulf Pier, Warehouse One, the Waterline Replacement and Relocation, as well as F one, F one as well. So Tina, our Public Finance Manager and I were going through these projects. Does lifting, I guess, to answer your question, does lifting the cap somehow compromise the amount that was set aside as AMT versus the amount that was not set aside as AMT? And the answer to that question is, as presented in the bill, no. But the port will just have to ensure that when they're completing the project, that they're completing it, there is a lineup of projects. The projects, the AMT versus non-AMTs match up or they're fine, they're, they're deemed acceptable, at acceptable levels for what was issued in the original bond. The, the prevailing trend is that everything is coming in over budget. As I previously mentioned, was articulated fairly well by, was articulated well by Administrator Respecho. was articulated fairly well by, was articulated well by Administrator Rispicio. And so it is not a concern at this juncture that this bill would somehow affect the ability to meet AMT. It would affect its ability to meet AMT if they scrapped all these projects and said, we're going to build a parking lot, but that's not allowable under the current law. And so for that reason, the answer to that is, to answer your question, it does not appear, it does not appear that this legislation hinders the ability to meet the AMT versus non-AMT requirement.
I appreciate that response. So would you think there'd be an amendment just to kind of reinforce that?
No, ma'am. I don't think so. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. And then the other thing is, yeah, and looking over the committee report, we didn't, it doesn't append the ORC, the Bond Council's letter that you have in front, so I would like to make the motion to, to add that to our journal. Mr. Chair, if we can put that on the record and uploaded?
Could you repeat the motion?
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion to append the Bond Council's letter that clears any, I guess, indenture, violation of indenture, if we can append that to, to this committee report, or if we can provide copies to all senators as well.
So there's a motion to append the Bond Council letter as well as, to the committee report, as well as share it with all the members of the body?
Yes.
All right, on that motion, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing? Motion carries, my understanding also is that it's already in the report, so?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not in the report.
Okay, well, just, motion carries, so I guess it'll be appended to the report and, and shared with the rest of the members.
Thank you so much. Yeah, that's really my only question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do want to clarify because the language in the bill includes the repairs to F1 through F6. And originally, when the bond was pursued, the port's position at the time was that the repairs would be addressed through port revenue, particularly in the case of F1. We did understand that there were needed repairs to that fuel facility. Are any of your current revenue funds being used to offset any repairs to any of these peers that are listed? These have been added on since?
Yes, Senator Brown, for instance, $4 million from this fiscal year to Phase 2 of the H WARF, and then $4 million from next fiscal year. But we have been using port revenue, maybe upwards of $5 million per fiscal year since I've been there, to address some of the other issues at the port in terms of CIPs. And we could provide that list of all the CIPs that we completed since 2019.
How soon could we get that list?
I can make, yeah, we can, as soon as we, as soon as now.
That'll be good. It'd be good to see that before we actually vote on this bill. It also references your, your information technology system, and you mentioned earlier this morning that you had an alternate funding for that?
For the IT, that we're undergoing IT study right now to determine if we're going to, this for the terminal operating system, right?
Yes.
Whether, whether, we had to extend the current service provider, Navis, because they were going to upgrade their software capacity, and yet we were not even 100% of the current capacity we have. And so through WSP having a subcontract with LIGTEC, I believe they're determining what other terminal operating systems are out there. But we could very well use that $7 million for the terminal, terminal operating software.
Is there another source that could be used? Because I mean, this to me is a short-term benefit with a long-term investment payment of how many years?
Or maybe not, because this is not operations.
I mean, this is something within a matter of years, I'm sure you're going to want to upgrade again. I'm just, I don't want to be paying 30 years for something that we're going to use in the next four to five years, for example, so I don't know. I mean, I like fiscal infrastructure that's going to be there many, many, many years, and hopefully beyond the time the debts are paid up, because this is a long-term debt of the port. I'd hope you consider that, because it's very fleeting, and why would you want to be paying 30 years later for something that you're going to use within a five-year period? With regards to the Tiger Grant, and that was the, that particular year when the Tiger Grant was awarded, Guam was one of only six ports in the entire United States that was awarded Tiger. What is your timeline, you know, I understand you're requesting MARAD, you know, to perhaps provide a waiver on the Buy America requirement. What is your timeline for that? Because I'm sure the time is long ticking on the Tiger Grant that was issued almost, what, five, six years ago?
Yeah, I think we have to have substantial completion by March 31 of 2026, four, right, 2024?
Do you have a timeline for MARAD if they don't give you a response and it's still hanging? I mean, you can't commence on the project using those funds if you don't know whether they're going to concur on your request.
Well, that's precisely why, as many times as we've communicated to MARAD what our challenges are, the matter is still before the Secretary of Transportation to give the waiver. That's why we finally asked the board to concur with our approach to proceed as if though we got the waiver. But we're documenting all the reasons for a waiver, like we are at 37% increased cost versus the 6% threshold, time constraints also.
Are you able to commence, have you commenced at all on the H WARF project to actual, any actual physical upgrade?
No, because despite knowing that it's the right thing to do, to proceed as if though we got the waiver, I wanted the board to weigh in on it, rightfully so. So we have a resolution that is very prescriptive, very detailed. It highlights all of our efforts over the years and basically concurs with our decision to proceed as if though we got the waiver, also noting that it's going to cost us $12 million in order to get the $10 million.
No, I understand, you elaborated on that. But do you have a timeline for MARAD if they don't respond? I mean, if the project ends up being held hostage, what, what avenue are you going to pursue? Because obviously you can't proceed of using non-American material with the expectation you're going to be able to access the $10 million from Tiger.
Based on that board resolution that we had just this past week, board meeting, we've already communicated to Sumotomo Construction that they're able to get the steel from a non-Buy American provider. So we're just proceeding as if though we got the waiver.
And if you don't get the waiver?
Then we don't get the reimbursement.
Then you don't get the $10 million. I, I'm surprised that MARAD has not responded. I mean, they're all in the same building, I'm sure. I'm sure all the key players in MARAD see the Secretary of Transportation fairly regularly.
Senator Brown, if, just ask Joe to comment.
Thank you. Senator Brown, it's a good question, because during the past several months, almost a year now, we've been communicating with H WARF on our challenges. So to answer your question, where we're at with it, we submitted a white paper, we submitted the request for the waiver, not only for the construction materials and for Hotel Warr specifically, but also for the cranes. So where are we at with, with it right now? Last week, we had a, we had a virtual meeting with our program manager, David Bonet, and the question that we posed to David Bonet was, how long would it take for the secretary to make the determination or to waive it? He said it's going to take six to nine months, and we told him that's not going to happen. So what we did is, we were proactive, and we requested to meet with three people, the Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, MARAD Administrator, she's the former Rear Admiral Anne Phillips, who's now retired, and we also requested to meet with John Acolino, who is the Commander for Indo-Pacific PACOM. Just this morning, and how did we request for those? We asked Congressman Member Dalio two weeks ago to set up a meeting, a person, courtesy visit to both, both individuals at USDOT. Those, the process is ongoing. In fact, this morning, Gustav Hein, you received that email too, General Manager, and they're at the secretary's level right now. They're asking this morning, when, when can we be able to meet? And they're also requesting the customary request for, why do you want to meet with, you know, with the secretary? So we're answering that question, in fact, I started on it this morning. And the timeline that we initially requested for was December 8th to December 15. We don't know if we're able to meet that timeline, and maybe we may have a different one, maybe later in this month, but we want to get it done right away because that resolution that, that the General Manager had mentioned, although it actually allows us to do it, which by the way, it's also addressed to the secretary, the, the MARAD Administrator, all the folks that are required to be able to be aware of it. So we're doing all those things as, as a due diligence, and we're hopeful that after we submit the questionnaire, that's customary for, for courtesy visit, we'll be able to get an answer.
Was there a request made earlier? I mean, it's, it's, it's been like four and a half years since this bond was executed initially.
Yeah.
I mean, people like Pete, these are players that have been involved from MARAD from the very beginning. You know, in our case, we had Governor Calvill make a request to meet with Secretary of Transportation Fox at the time, and the request was granted. So is that something maybe you could ask the governor to help facilitate at that level with the secretary to facilitate a meeting? Because these are not strangers on the MARAD side to the Guam situation. I mean, they physically been to Guam, they've, they've been at H WARF, they know what the issues are. I mean, it's not, it's not like we're just asking today and they're saying, oh, we need six to eight months. This is not anything new. Is this something the port formally requested earlier?
And yes, Senator Brown, we have been, even through the Association of American Ports, we're one of the very few jurisdictions that said, we're certain that Guam is not the only one that are going to experience the need to get gantry cranes and other yard equipment that's not manufactured in the United States. So now the Association of American Ports, they unveiled their five strategic initiatives, and their top initiative is to get the waiver for yard equipment. Respect to H WARF, we, we've been on the record communicating this with MARAD, and that resolution outlines all of our efforts. So it's not just, we're in the final year of the first four years and we're asking for the waiver now. We have documents showing that this is what we've been consistently been asking for.
Well, I mean, I hope they, I hope they respond to you and you're able to salvage this, because it's been a long time, and certainly a long time awaiting. Also with the issue with regards to your gantry cranes, I mean, the plan had been put forth, even in the execution of this bond, that the port would begin by 2026, 2027 to actually have a physical new crane in place with the anticipation that the existing cranes would be phasing out. Because these were not new cranes that were purchased by the port back in 2012. I mean, they were used cranes that were modified and repaired, and ongoing repairs and maintenance to keep them operating. Has any decision been made by the port? Because it's now 2023, is right around the corner in a matter of weeks, and time goes by quickly, and these, these, you know, these cranes aren't going to be built overnight or brought overnight or installed overnight.
Correct, and I thank you for the conversation, because at least you're giving me the opportunity to say that we're not just recognizing that we need to do these things now. We've highlighted these needs in the 2018 transition report, to which you were a part of. We recognize the aging gantry cranes and how in 2026, the first crane needs to be replaced. And so about maybe two years ago, we submitted a grant to MARAD for two gantry cranes, and we were going to finance one from USDA loan, using the container, cert, handling those container surcharges of repayment source, so even at a 50% match. So we got the debrief from MARAD and said that we had a very good application, it was robust, we had a robust waiver request for the Buy American, but they could not even take it to first base because of the whole Buy American issue. And so when all this bipartisan infrastructure money came out and the trillions available for ports, for example, we submitted the same grant application, this time asking for three gantry cranes instead of two. And so we have, as was done before with the port modernization, we have DOD weighing in to MARAD on how getting those gantry cranes are going to be a very critical component of the whole military readiness plan.
Do you have an alternate route in the event this doesn't pan out and they don't fund the cranes or they don't agree to the not Buy America?
No, we do. And so we have been in, going through procurement over the last year with our consultants to develop, and the end users, to develop the crane specifications. We're doing, we will be publishing an IDIQ for one crane, so we have money for one or two or three, we don't have to go from the beginning for procurement to do that. We do have a plan. We got, potentially, we got pre-approved from USDA for about $30 million, using that funding source as a repayment. If we don't make this round in MARAD, we're definitely going to purchase one gantry crane, because the goal is, we go through all of procurement 2023, we get the notice to proceed end of 2023, January 2024, we give them two years, the company that would get selected, we give them up to two years to construct everything, ship it here, and we would meet that 2026 timeline.
Have you decided what type of crane you're going to proceed with, the existing cranes? Are you going to go electric? Because certainly if you go electric, you have a whole infrastructure that the port currently does not have to accommodate that.
Yeah, and as you're aware, that was, seems to be, you know, the, the question, do you go 50 gauge, do you go 100 gauge? Do you go electric, do you go diesel? Do you go Panamax, post-Panamax? And so six months within, within my time there, I just kept hearing the discussion, the debate, the passion, no, 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 we need to go 100 gauge. I just, one day, I just said, and the consultants, we're going to do a study on, do we go 100 gauge, do we go 50 gauge? So I just said, first of all, don't do anything that you're not, to the consultants, don't do any work to which you're not authorized to. If you submit an invoice and unauthorized it, we're not paying you. So that was our understanding, baseline understanding. Second thing, I said, if we go 50 gauge versus 100 gauge, if you go 100 gauge, you're going to have to, you need more rail space, either you extend the terminal yard out or you give up some of that precious real estate. So I asked the team, are we going to extend the terminal yard the next 30 years, which is the acceptable lifespan of a new crane? They said, no. I said, if we go electric or diesel, do we have enough backup generator capacity to run the three gantry cranes if in the event, are we going to do anything like that in the next 30 years? No. If we go Panamax, post-Panamax to attract some of the bigger vessels, are we going to do any major dredging over the last, over the next 30 years? The answer is no. So I told WSP, there's your feasibility study, there's our decision. We're going to, we're going to get the existing 50-gauge STS gantry cranes with higher reach and greater capacity for the lift, and that's going to be what our specs are going to be. I know the angst is that we're one of the last jurisdictions to have a 50-gauge gantry crane, which is why even if we needed to, there's no more gantry cranes that we can purchase used. And so the decision almost sometime in 2019 was to go with the same crane specs, but to have those different requirements. And we've been having all this procurement to determine what the scope of, what the spec should be, and I think it's, it went back to WSP, and I think by January, we should be able to issue the notice, sorry, the, the publication of the, of the procurement.
How much money do you have in your current fund on your reserves for the purchase of a new crane?
Well, I believe we have about 20 million in reserves, but again, that 20 million is for these shortfalls that we are anticipating.
No, no, there's a specific account at the port specifically for the future procurement of cranes, that, that was included, that requirement was included by statute. I think Senator Ada was the, Tom Ada was the advocate for that.
The last I checked was probably about 6 million. But what, what, what happened early on is that there's a lot, so the crane surcharge authorizes the port to reimburse itself for substantive, significant repairs to the cranes. And so I'll give you a breakdown also, over the years, we've been spending a tremendous amount of money having to make those cranes maintenance, but also make those cranes functional so that they're OSHA certified.
So has money been deducted from that? Because 6 million doesn't sound too much different than we, when we left the port. So it hasn't grown then in terms of the reserve?
I'll get you, I'll get you an update on where we're at.
You relayed that you have 20 million in reserves collectively. I know we had put the first 10 million in there prior to executing the bond as show good faith effort to the bond investors, that we are fiscally sound, that we had the money available, and those monies were put in place. So you have since added an additional 10 million?
Correct.
Yeah, I always, you always tell us we're, we were under 186,000, and, you know, we had put 10 million aside out of our revenue specifically for that, for that purpose. I did want to ask Gita, because I know this ongoing back and forth and saying, well, Bond Council said this, and Bond Council said that, and it's okay, because Bond Council said it's okay. But I also know, because we signed off, yes, John Wang, we signed off on the bond covenants. There are specific provisions of the bond covenants that do- There are specific provisions of the bond covenants that do require formal reporting requirements to the bond investors with regards to any substantive changes that we are making with regards to the projects that we had asked them to fund. Has such formal documents ever been generated to provide that notification to them of these changes that are being proposed or are being proposed in legislation? Because obviously, it's not our money at this point.
Yes, thank you for that question, Senator. The significant events that must be reported include any kind of delinquencies in principal and interest payments, unscheduled draws on debt service reserves that result in financial, that may result in financial difficulties, unscheduled draws on credit enhancements reflecting financial difficulties, substitution of credit or liquidity providers or their failure to perform, adverse tax opinions by the IRS, tender offers, deficiencies, ratings changes, bankruptcy and solvency receivership or similar event to the issue. Those are the significant events that have been articulated in the bond indenture that need to be reported. Capital project changes have not been determined to be an event to be reported.
Well, I'll go back and look at that because I remember we had the public hearing.
Senator Brown, your time has expired.
I think Senator Adda is deferring his time to me.
Mr. Chair, I'll be deferring my time to Senator Brown.
Just so I don't get caught short of my question.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll go back and review that particular section and check with you because it did, at least to the extent I understand the English language, indicated that those, that any changes to the actual projects would need to be included. I think in all fairness, we just want to make sure. Because we did go through the process, as you know, you were a board member at the time, of meeting all these specific requirements that the bond investors had for the port to even begin to, you know, put this up for consideration, considering it was our first bond venture. You know, we wanted to make sure we met all their requirements and I just want to ensure moving forward that, you know, we don't put ourselves into question. I just want to make sure the documentation is there and it's there for their reference if these issues do come up on their side.
Thank you, Senator. The team will also, we will also revisit the documents one more time and just look for anything that might indicate otherwise.
That would be helpful, I appreciate that. I mean, overall, I don't have too many more questions, but I do want to elaborate with regards to these ceilings that were put in place because it was a very different environment while some members were here at the time, a few of them were here in the 34th Guam Legislature. When we did come before the bond, I mean, we were here for six wonderful days, being questioned on the financial viability and our intent and what we were going to do. And just for the record to indicate, you know, these caps were put in by the Guam Legislature. The Guam Legislature reduced the bond financing that we could pursue to, you know, $71 million. We had asked for more, we had the capability of financing more, and there were enough bond investors to have provided more money to the port at the time because they, the amount of purchases we received were far beyond what we were putting forth. So I think it was important to put that for the record in terms of what we were able, what the port itself had requested, what ultimately the legislature had approved. So these particular caps were put in place by the Guam Legislature at the time. I also want to note, because they were questioning us substantially on the YTK issue, some of them speculated or had suspicion that our management or leadership team was going to pay off YTK, if not using bond money, using port revenue and using the bond money to address the needed projects. And obviously, time has shown that was never our agenda. We did pursue this issue at the Supreme Court of Guam. I think all our actions indicated our intention was never to pay YTK, which ultimately, we did not pay, and the Supreme Court of Guam concurred with regards to our findings, even though at the beginning of this term and this administration, there were attempts while we were awaiting the Supreme Court decision to actually meet with YTK and address settlements. So I think it's important to relay that. I probably will put an amendment, Mr. Chair, to this bill to provide a reporting requirement to the legislature, at least so that there is a public accounting beyond just the board meeting and the board members. Because we also hear, I mean, when audits do come up with the Port Authority these days, the General Manager has a tendency to object to the findings and disagree with the findings, and that's the end of the story. I mean, we want to make sure certainly that this is the first of many other future borrowings by the Port Authority for other projects. Because as the General Manager said, as we are aware, it's probably going to cost over 300 million to address the full upgrades that are needed, and that doesn't include the ongoing erosion and damage that is happening on a daily basis at the Port Authority. I also want to add that the service life extension project of 10 million that the Port Authority borrowed from the Bank of Guam was implemented. So within the last seven, eight years, there were major improvements that were addressed to the WARS from F2 to F6. So I just want to point that out, that these repairs had been made, the port did borrow that money, the port did implement those repairs, and part of the bond that we pursued actually paid off the remainder of that debt. So I think it's important to note that upgrades and improvements have been made over a period of time and certainly are going to continue. I doubt that those repairs will ever be done at one time. I doubt the port will ever have the financial resources, obviously, to address the $300 million grade at any one time because it's going to be quite a substantial project, but it's also has to be put in place to ensure that the port can continue to operate on a regular basis. More so, that's why the focus was put on addressing the improvements to H-War, to make sure that that upgrade was there so the alternative port would be available to address that. So those things were also put in place. I do want to add, as I wrap up here, because I know, General Manager Respejo, you have a tendency to point out that you've had a clean audit over the last three years. Well, there were many years prior to your tenure that the port, certainly the six years I was there and the remaining year that Senator Torres was there, the Port Authority had a clean audit for those six-year periods. So I just think for the record, it's important to point that out. I mean, we all build upon existing work of those prior to us, and I think it's important to recognize that. Everything doesn't begin and end with each of us. So with that, Mr. Chair, no further comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Torres.
No questions, I just want to thank you for providing us a copy of the status of the bond-funded projects. I think it spells out very nicely the scenario that you're in at this current time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Nelson.
Mr. Respejo, can you please give us, it was mentioned earlier that there were upgrades to, or repairs of F2, F3, F4, F5? Can you please explain to us what those repairs were in the past and what further repairs are needed for that?
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Those repairs were just for service life extension projects to extend the service life of that particular facility, maybe five to seven years. But those were done maybe almost 10 years ago. So again, because it's in saltwater, because it's a highly corrosive environment, you have those sheet pilings that rust and this 18, this $22 million grant that we got for F1 to F6 are going to address what was addressed prior to that time. And it's just for the service life of those particular facilities to extend it to another five to seven years, for example.
Thank you. And can you please explain the findings of the ProMarine technology in their underwater assessment and inspections of F1, F3, F4, F5, and F6? What that basically entailed?
Yeah. When this first public law was amended to include spending revenue bond money on F1, we did commission ProMarine to do an update assessment on F1. Their assessment report did confirm that the F1 needs to be repaired, but in particularly in addition to F1, the dolphins also are in need of repair. There's about five dolphins or fins and some of them can be repaired to where we extend the service life of those particular items or a couple of them need to be totally replaced. So when we submitted the grant for F1 to F6 repair, those damage assessment reports were also submitted to Marad so they could see the gravity of the situation.
Thank you. And there's also a concern in the rise in user fees. Can you explain to the public what the PUC's role would be if there was a rise in user fees?
Yeah. Part of our master plan update is the financial feasibility of the port. We're taking a look at ports' operational needs, our short and long-term capital improvement project needs, and that feasibility report is going to determine if the port can stay operational with the current tariff rates that we have. What we've been doing is we've been branding the port so that we can convince and convey to Department of Defense that we do have capacity to have the Port Authority of Guam for them to deploy and receive their military assets. And from time to time, we do take in those military assets through the port. If we just take a look at the 600 acres of port property and attract new investments and new revenue other than the container throughput or the break bulk, if we have H-War fully operational, then we can generate more revenue beyond what we generate currently. The Public Utilities Commission's role in raising the tariffs would be, I imagine, after the Port Authority Board passes a resolution saying, based on the financial feasibility study, there's no recourse other than to raise tariffs, for example, then that would have to go through the legislature, then it would have to go through the PUC. For the PUC's role is to regulate the fees at the port, just as their role is the same for the fees they regulate at Guam Power Authority and Guam Waterworks Authority.
Do you foresee, do you foresee any user fees being increased through the PUC in any, in a matter of time, perhaps in the next year or two or three?
No, I don't, but let me qualify that. I don't foresee asking tariffs be increased for any operational expenses. If, for example, there really is a need to go off for a $300 million bond or a bond that can take us as high as we can, raising tariffs will be an option, but that wouldn't be the first option. The first option hopefully will be getting Area A retrofitted so that DOD uses that as a fuel hub of the Pacific. That additional throughput means additional revenue. When Hotel WARF is up and running, those additional revenues can be securitized to go get a bond. If you recall, that's what the airport needed to do early on in this administration is the cost of the construction versus the amount of money they had increased significantly so they had to go back to the bond market. I think that with an improved bond rating of stable with a positive outlook, and in a couple of years, we'll have the ability to refinance. It's possible we can go out, refinance, reset us back to the same $79 million that we borrowed and whatever is available, then put that into more CIP projects. But anything we would do would be based on a comprehensive study and we would be guided by those kinds of information that will be provided to us.
Has there been any discussions with the PUC about rate increases or a possibility of a rate increase?
No, no. And what we've been doing though, Senator, is we've been looking at our existing tariff and we've been charging for the tariff. We've determined that there's, every time something moves on the yard, that's a billable exposure. And so we're looking at all of those special services requests and those, and we're charging for the tariff, which is why we don't see a need to even think about raising tariffs. We're working harder, we're working smarter, and we're improving efficiencies because morale is up.
Okay, thank you. I understand that, you know, in the foreseeable future that, you know, you don't anticipate any rate increases, but if we were to put in an amendment prohibiting any rate increases in the next maybe two years, would that impact the bond covenants or any, or would it impact us going to the bond market?
Increases not likely, if not specifically articulated in the operating statement. Decreases, however, may trigger that effect.
Okay, so we can put in an amendment saying that the port will not increase tariffs within the next two years?
We need to double-check what was the rate scheduled, that was the tariff schedule that was agreed upon in the indenture. Tina, do you know off the top of your head?
I know at the time we were doing the bonds, the rates were being managed by the PUC and that was the process they were going through. So for us to legislatively mandate it maybe, it could trigger a bond concern. I don't know if it'll be an outright default, but because we recognize the PUC as the rate-setting agency, we would have to verify with Bond Counsel.
Right. So decreases, we're fairly sure that a decrease or an abatement could violate the bond indenture, but an increase, likely not. I mean, an increase, no, but a cap on an increase, no, not unless an increase was slated in the schedule in the bond indenture. We'll double-check on that, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm asking the question because earlier in the dialogue in this exercise, we discussed that the Governor did allocate several millions of dollars to the port to specifically not increase tariffs, right? And so if we utilize an amendment for some, for that language to reinforce that to the people of Guam, that there's not going to be any tariff increases because of the commitment that the Governor gave to the port, what, how much was that exactly?
Oh, 15 million?
15 million for the next two years. Could we include that in the, in this bill as an amendment? Would that impact the bond? And I think that's what you're going to get back to me on, right? If that's going to impact any of the bond covenants or perhaps impact the foreseeable bond that you have now.
Well, I believe the last time the port got a tariff increase, I want to say it was 7%, it was 4% and then 1% thereafter. And I think the last time we got the 1% increase was in fiscal year 2020. And so we've been operating the last couple of fiscal years without that additional 7%. We're belt-tightening, but I don't know what the unintended consequences will be for an amendment like that. I'm not entirely opposed to something like that, but I just don't know what the unintended consequence is. We're...
An amendment might need to be along the lines of a, similar to the pledged versus unplugged that we talk about in BPT, where you say something to the effect of, an increase cannot occur in as far as it affects the, may not occur in as far as it does not affect the pledged bond payments. Does that make sense? It's, so, similar to BPT, with BPT, you can roll it back, you have the authority to roll it back, but not to the extent that it impairs the ability to repay the bond. And so there may be some similar, to me, if I were to, if I were to proffer an amendment along those lines, I would probably proffer an amendment that's somewhat general in as far as no increase, no increase to tariffs, notwithstanding any impairment to the, to the BP, to the pledged revenues, pledged revenues towards debt service.
Okay. And then, so, that's just on the understanding that since there's nothing in writing that specifically states that that $15 million will be used for delaying the increase of tariffs, right?
But when the money was received, it was addressed by the board. So we were very public, the board was very clear that getting this ARP would be in exchange for not raising tariffs for two fiscal years.
And when does that, what is the end date of the two fiscal years?
Last fiscal year and this fiscal year.
Okay, so at the end of FY '23? Okay, thank you very much, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Also, Ms. Meniola did have some other information that could address one of the concerns or questions that was raised by Senator Brown. Mel, please.
Yes, thank you, Senator, thank you, Mr. Chair. The question that was consistently raised by Senator Brown at the hearing as well as on the floor today was concerning the reporting that she recalls that we needed to make to bond investors and I was, we were double-checking because I know that this was not something imagined, I know that this was probably something that existed. So we did double-check the bond indenture, and in the bond indenture, it does state...
So we did double-check the bond indenture, and in the bond indenture, it does state that the board may modify the specifications or descriptions of any project or projects by filing with the trustee and each depository for each construction account for such project or projects as a certificate of authority describing such modification, together with a written report of the port consultant, to the effect that such modification will have no material adverse effect on the authority's ability to comply with the rate covenant contained in the indenture, and an opinion of bond counsel, to the effect that such modification and use of amounts will not adversely affect exclusion of interest on any bond from the gross income for federal income tax purposes. So the bond indenture does state that there must be disclosure to the trustees, but the trustees play a different role than the bond investors themselves. The trustees are the banks that hold the money in trust and release the money, they hold the money, the payments from the Port Authority and release the money to the bond investors. They must be made aware, and this is part of the ongoing disclosures and notifications. However, the bond investors themselves do not need to be made aware, to specifically answer her question. And then back to the portion about what I had discussed earlier, which was what does need to be disclosed to investors, consistent with that, Tina, our public finance manager will be, we're locating our closing documents. It's basically in the, in the closing documents and signed at the time by the administrator, which at the time would have been, who at the time would have been Senator Brown, and that would be the laundry list of items that I had mentioned before, financial audits and financial reporting and project reporting and so on and so forth, but consistent with what I'd stated earlier.
Thank you, Ms. Mandiola. Speaker Chalhui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the panel for your continued responses. When the governor, just to follow up on my colleague's questioning, when the governor said there would be no tariff increases and the board said there would be no tariff increases for two years, was there any concern from the bond counsel or bond covenants or any correspondence in that regard?
The, at the time, my recollection is that there was no conversation between GITA and bond counsel. My colleagues over at the port can answer if there was any direct conversation with them that we were not privy to. However, similar to GPA and GWA with, similar to the GPA rate, rate relief that was provided by this body, I believe the tie-in was that ARP is, to some extent, revenue replacement, and so it did not appear to impair revenue, and it was for the current year. And if the port was saying, the first, when the port covers its expenses, the first thing that usually an agency will budget for is going to be their debt service, right? And then their payroll, their debt service and things along those lines. So for us, considering it was a current year, if debt service was already covered, then it would not have been a cause for concern. And if for the following year, if debt service was unimpaired, then it would also not have been, it would not have been something that we would have brought to the bond counsel, especially in, given the revenue replacement of, revenue replacement role of federal funds such as ARP.
The point is that it was not raised at all, and it's just peculiar to me that if the legislature suggests the exact identical putting of freeze on tariff increases, that all of a sudden, there's a bond concern where there was none prior. And I'm not asking for any answers, I'm just stating that, that that is very, I mean, you know, I hear your explanation, but it was not brought, there was no concern. And I am suggesting that that is, that is...
I think, I think, Madam Speaker, respectfully, the concern was raised by our oversight chair when she asked, Gita, would there be an issue?
Right.
Not like, oh, we don't want to do it. I said I'm very open to it, so just for...
Right, and I'm, that's why I'm saying, yeah, all of a sudden, we're talking about whether there's bond concerns, when there was none, when we did, the governor did the exact same thing. So that's, I guess, the goal is that, yeah, we're making this additional authority to the board, and we would like to see the board respond in the exact same way, that with these additional authorities and this additional flexibility, that they are going to be able to take care of the tariffs because we are trying in every way possible, with every measure that comes before us, to take care of the people of Guam, who are dealing with the increase of cost of living here, the increase, the inflation. And so that's all, and I'm sure you all agree with this, and I hope the board members also agree. I wanted to, no question, sir?
But can I just say, isn't the current statute prohibit any tariff increases for this round of revenue bonds?
It doesn't prohibit it, it just says that this revenue bonds that was being passed was not going to impact, it was some kind of finding that it wasn't going to impact the tariffs at that time. There was no prohibition put. And I, so I wanted to follow up with a couple more issues as well, just small ones. So the testimony was that the projects that would be funded by these bond proceeds are just, they're going to be the same projects that are listed in the bill. They might just have their amounts, the amounts are going to change, and in changing those amounts, some of the projects might actually end up with nothing or very little, so they won't be completed. And so you might, you're going to look for other funding sources to complete those projects, of course, because they're necessary. We're hoping it's not increased tariffs that fund those projects, that's all we're trying to say. And you said you might go out for refinancing in a few years and use those funds for, to fund the shortfall in these CIP projects, but, or those savings. I was just wondering, and then one of my other colleagues mentioned YTK and payment of the YTK, or the discussion at the time when we were discussing this bond, the original bond, about whether the proceeds could be used on payment of the YTK settlement. And if you look at the language of the bill on page, amended bill on page five, line 10, it says, "To finance certain authority capital improvements, including but not limited to..." So that's why I had asked earlier if it could be used, what other projects you had in mind, and you said none. And I just want to make sure, we don't need an amendment here, do we, that precludes use of any of these proceeds on a YTK settlement, do we? I mean, I know it's not a capital improvement project, and it wasn't anything that was proposed bond, but I just, I guess, want to just get your word on the record here that that's not being contemplated, the use of these proceeds?
Yeah, the whole YTK is moot.
I just want to make sure on the record because it wasn't moot at the beginning of the term. It became alive again, so I want to make sure...
But there's nothing to pay.
Yes or no?
No, absolutely not, yeah.
All right. And then on the original law that was passed, it was public law, 35-44, that, what does this one do? I think it changed the list of the projects, right? I mean, this wasn't the original, there was one before that, and then anyways, it was 3470 and then 3544. But in 3544, there's a section three that says, "The Port Authority shall continue to be subject to a separate independent review by the Public Utilities Commission for each project that exceeds $1 million." This language is not repeated again in this bill, and I'm just wondering, what is the purpose of that and does it need to be repeated again? The PUC independent, separate independent review for each project.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Speaker, we're not taking anything out of previous, that's in previous statutes, we're just amending it. So we didn't touch that section, we didn't touch the other section with respect to this not triggering a need to go out for tariff increases. If you need to restate it, then we're certainly open to that. We're very clear that every single penny from the revenue bond-funded projects are all subject to PUC approval. And at the time, Fred Horeki gave testimony, he also said that that was his understanding. If it's not revenue bond-funded, we do have to go through the PUC for anything over $1 million, that's our contract protocol. Yeah.
But what has their review been for these projects so far, any?
Oh, we go there and we get unanimous consent. They approved the H-WARF project, they approved the waterline project.
These projects?
Yes. Those projects that are before...
So they've been, that's been completed for these, some of these projects?
Those projects that have been before the PUC, we never got rejected by them.
Okay, Madam Speaker, the time has expired. That concludes the second round. We will dismiss the panel, recess until 2:00 PM, and continue with the third and final round. We will recess now until 2:00 PM.